Good evening, I'd like to call our May 17th Revere School Committee meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members.
Mr. Ferretti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Snella.
Here.
Ms. Thye.
Here.
Mayor Origo.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the April 12, 2016 meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferretti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Snella.
Yes.
Ms. Thye.
Yes.
Mayor Origo.
Yes.
Public hearing regarding school choice. First, I'll ask if there are any proponents in favor of school choice? That's how the hearing closed. Any opponents of school choice? Hearing and seeing none, that's how the hearing is closed. Dr. Kelly?
(Inaudible).
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Revere School Committee elect not to participate in school choice.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Dr. Kelly.
So, just before the committee votes, as a point of clarification for the audience, the vote on school choice is a vote of whether or not the city should allow students from other communities to attend school in the Revere Public Schools. And historically, I think primarily because of overcrowding in all of our schools and because this committee and the City Council and other representatives of the city have seen it as not a good idea to educate other students in our schools, especially with the high volume of students that we already have, it would be a yes vote on Ms. Thye's proposal that would continue to exclude students from outside, non-residents of the city of Revere from attending the Revere Public Schools. And again, because of the overcrowding situation that we already have in all of our schools and for a myriad other reasons, I would urge the committee to vote yes on Committee Woman Thye's proposal.
Any other members? Roll call.
I made the motion just-
Ms. Thye?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Make it third.
No, I just made the motion so that we could talk about it. And I think, I certainly share that. Obviously, we have too many problems of our own. We certainly don't want to take more people in, and we don't have enough room. So, it seems to me that it's a given that we should vote not to participate. Thank you.
Any other members? Roll call on Ms. Thye's motion to not adopt the state option for school choice.
Mr. Ferretti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Snella.
Yes.
Ms. Thye.
Yes.
Mayor Origo.
Yes.
Superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Origo. So, we have several things to talk about on today's superintendent's report, but we're going to start off with two presentations. The first one is going to be by Nancy Burrell, who is an English teacher at Revere High School, and with her is Dr. Garcia, and they're going to talk about the program, the course that the Cultural Competency Committee has put together for our students, and this will be part of the curriculum during the advisory period for next academic year. And after that, we're going to hear from Barbara Kelly at the Paul Revere School, and she has one of her board members here with her, one of our innovation board members here with her, and they're going to share with us the election-to-work agreement that the teachers at the Paul Revere School have agreed to. So, without further ado, we'll start with Ms. Burrell and Dr. Garcia.
So, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for allowing us to come here and present on such an important matter, which is the multicultural curriculum that a group of teachers at the high school put together. I say it's an important matter because this is a much-needed document in our schools. We're talking about schools and districts with a significant number of minority kids, kids from different latitudes around the world, and we have to understand where they're coming from, and to understand where they're coming from, we have to educate people about the diversity, the cultural background they're bringing along, the language, and the way to deal with those kids or address or interact with those kids in the classroom. So, about, I would say, six months ago, I think in November, we, this is all research-based. It's not something that we just, a group of teachers decided to get together and put something, packages. This is something that I have worked very hard by conducting research in the field, coming up with concrete evidence that would support the cause, and work out a curriculum that addresses in a meaningful way the needs and aspirations of our students in the classroom. So, my hope is that, as a principle, is that I will see this document being implemented in the advisory, where teachers and students meet three days a week, they interact with each other, and they develop personalized relationships as a way to really support the curriculum instruction. So, I, we, the way we did it, just want to give you a little bit of context of that, the way we did it, we tasked a group of teachers with the responsibility of putting a focus group together, where they interviewed kids, they collect data, they did the data interpretation, and based on that, we shared the data with faculty, they saw the way kids responded, and you'd be surprised that kids are very happy with Revere High School. They're happy with the environment where they are. But to be a little bit more proactive and to make sure we get a document that would address future concerns, we decided to put a cohort of teachers to develop a curriculum that is research-based, as I said, that is going to be used during advisory. So, I have with me Ms. Burrell and the other two, three teachers that also worked on this document could not be here today, but they need to be acknowledged for their work, for the work, for the outstanding work that they have done. Their names are Atis Gul, the last name is kind of, yeah, I think, well, I will just go with the first name, Jenny Carabino and Grace Chang. These teachers work very hard, and Nancy Burrell is here, she's going to share a wonderful document that's very meaningful with all of you. Thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for having us here today. Next slide, Diane. So, I want you to know that the foundation for this project was "The Perspectives for Diverse America," which is the first literacy-based curriculum. It allows for backwards planning for social justice, and it engages students in social justice topics, empowering them to make change. A big concern for us was ease-of-use for teachers, so we used the PowerPoint format. In most cases, videos are embedded, discussion questions are provided, and then there's notes provided as well with helpful hints for the teachers. Next slide. So, before any teacher starts an activity in the classroom, that teacher will go over the norms of discussion with the students, and those include things like respect each other when they're talking, speak from your own experience, respectfully challenge each other, no attacks. Next slide. And things like a continued focus on the goal being to gain a deeper understanding. Next slide. So, the four major focus areas in the PowerPoint are identity-based questions, diversity-based questions, justice-based questions, and then action-based questions. So, here's a little example of a day. So, the diversity essential questions are, how do we connect in meaningful ways with people that are different from us? What's the relationship between diversity and inequality? What's it mean to say there's strength in diversity? And so, this particular activity is called Circles of Multicultural South. So, students put their name in that circle, and then in the satellite circles, they put identifiers or descriptors that they feel are important to them, things like Asian-American or female, student, athlete, scientist, things like that. After they do that, there's a self-activity and story sharing where the kids share a time when they were proud to identify with one of these descriptors, but they also share a time when it might have been painful or difficult to be identified with one of those This is from the action essential question, and the question asks, how can you create a community culture in which hate speech is both unacceptable, which is unacceptable both online and offline? And would you speak up why or why not? For every class, we provide definitions for the students. What is hate speech? We ask them, and then we provide the answer for them. Next slide. Oh, okay. Okay, so these discussion questions are, what are some general ways that hate speech can be used offline? What are general ways it can be used online? And then now, we show some videos where students can see hate speech online and offline, and they'll hear examples of how it affects individuals, groups, and communities, both online and offline. And as they're watching, we ask them, jot down any examples of hate speech that you hear. And here's a little video that you can show.
Sup, princess? What are you doing your book report on again? Memoirs of a Geisha? Is it?
I thought you were doing it on Moby Dick.
Very funny, guys. No, actually, it's pretty sad.
I just have a question. Does your dad know how gay you are?
Everyone knows how gay he is.
Question, answer.
The things you see happening online have real consequences. Will you stand up or stand by?
So, after students watch that video, next slide, and they read an article that also goes with this, we ask them questions to discuss in a group, how do you think you might feel if you were the recipient of derogatory messages? What do you think, why do you think people make derogatory remarks? What might their motives be? How are these kinds of attacks similar or different to calling your opponent a loser? Next slide. So, more major goals of this curriculum is to address misconceptions and provide facts and statistics for students. Next slide. So, for example, Miss About Immigration, we just put this up first. Most immigrants are here illegally, and we talk about it. And then, we provide students with the facts and statistics that answer that question, basically, that of the 41 million foreign-born people in the U.S. in 2013, 30 million were naturalized citizens, permanent residents, and legal residents. 11 million were unauthorized immigrants. Of those who did not have authorization to be here, about 40% entered the country legally and let their visas expire. So, the subjects that we cover are stereotypes, gay, lesbian, transgender rights, undocumented immigrants, misogyny, hate speech, what it means to be an American, religious freedom, First Amendment rights, Islamophobia, and opportunity, just to name a few. So, thank you.
Ms. Thye?
Nancy, I have a question. Actually, I have a million questions, but first, I'd like to compliment you on it.
Thank you.
It's really, it's a wonderfully structured and, you know, and organized way. I could see how well it could be used in-
There's about 56 lessons.
Is that how many? Right. And so, this is done in advisory. How long is this going to take? I mean, is this a curriculum that you will use every year? Or is it for a certain portion of the year? Or is it every advisory period?
We have advisory three days a week, and we could, you could probably use this about, because we also have gatherings on Wednesdays, you could probably use this about half-time. So, on Wednesdays, you know, maybe do one of these or do a gathering. There's enough to last all year.
There certainly is. There's enough to last through the four years of the high school when they're here, because things need to be reinforced as it goes through.
Right.
So, have you started anything actually yet?
I piloted a few things when I did a credit recovery class in advisory, and I did a couple of them just to see how they would go over, and it was amazing how well they, you know, it went. So, I'm hoping, you know, for continued success. I know some topics are going to be tough, and they're going to be difficult, and, you know, teachers need to understand that kids are going to disagree, and so, and, but we really tried to be informative and just to make it a place where kids, advisory already is a place where kids feel safe talking and sharing.
Yeah. This is hard. That's really hard to do, and I'm sure that there will be teachers who will have some difficulty with it, and there'll certainly be some kids that will have some difficulty with it, too. But the biggest danger is to ignore it.
Right.
And to pretend that it's not there.
And I think our kids really want to be involved with social change, and this gives them a great first step to launch that.
Right. It's a wonderful framework. I congratulate you all.
Thank you.
I'll be really, I hope that you'll come back and tell us later on how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thye. Any other members? Dr. Kelly?
So, I just wanted to reiterate for everybody that some of these topics that Ms. Burrell just went over are topics that the students generated that came from those focus group sessions where the kids said, these are the things that are causing us anxiety in the school, these are the things that we're worried about, that we feel stressed about, you know, that we are hearing negatively portraying our classmates or each other. So, it's really important to note that this curriculum was driven by the students. And the teachers that Dr. Garcia mentioned, including Ms. Burrell, have been in cultural competency training courses for over a year now, and they've done numerous workshops with their colleagues to help them understand how to broach these difficult conversations with students, and they'll continue to do that work so that the teachers, as Ms. Thye pointed out, this is going to be difficult for a lot of teachers to undertake. And, you know, we are providing the training for the teachers to help them cross that bridge of the difficult conversation and how to frame a difficult conversation and how to help kids extract themselves when they feel uneasy in a conversation. So, I feel confident in the high school team. They always do great work, and they have again here, and I'm sure that this will go, help us tremendously, make our kids feel like this is a safe learning environment for them every day. So, thank you. Kudos to both of you and your team.
Thank you.
So, next, we have Ms. Kelly, and are you presenting? Is Ralph going to present with you? Yeah, okay. Barbara?
My support.
All right. And Mr. DeChico, we certainly appreciate you being present tonight, as always, with the Paul Revere Innovation School and working on their Board of Directors so that we can make sure that we maintain that program well. And I'll pass the microphone to Mrs. Kelly to tell us the details of their election-to-work agreement.
This, every year, what we have to do is create an election-to-work agreement. First, it goes in front of the teachers. They looked at it, approved it. Next, it went to the governing board for a vote. They approved it. And then, we have to come in front of the school committee for your approval before the end of the school year, so every teacher can sign this, and they know exactly what they're going to do, and we're all on the same page. So, usually, I have to wait till your calendar is approved. The time, the year has just flown by. I mean, we're going to be out in a few weeks, so I have to get these signed before June 14th with the faculty, and your next meeting was, I think, the 27th of June, so we needed to, this was the next meeting. The first two pages are boilerplate. They haven't changed at all. I gave you a new copy because I made an error. I don't know how many eyes read this, corrected it, and yet, just before I left, I saw one, and these are hot off the presses, so that's why you have a new one in front of you. It is on page, oh, just page three is just our dates, and all of our dates this year coincide with the Revere Public School District's calendar. We, at Paul Revere, will have everything identical except for our half-a-day on every Wednesday. So, other than that, all the dates are the same, and you can see at the bottom of page three, we wrote that, regular RPS schedule, so it's Veer, and we added the dates of the holidays that the students and the teachers would be off. On the top of page four is where the error was. We had RPS, I mean, I'm sorry, Paul Revere, P-R-E, Professional Development, because that's what we did last year, was to create our plan on that very first day of school. This year, and I'm so glad, because our faculty missed it, we will be part of the Revere Public School District Professional Development. So, that is the one thing I changed. It says just District Professional Development, and the other, the old copy you had said Paul Revere. So, I know my teachers really missed that. We had a handful go last year, and it's really important to be part of the culture of the whole district and sharing that collateral with all the other teachers that they have, because they really, it just bonds people in a different way. Working at Paul Revere is great, but you need to be part of the whole district and with your other colleagues. So, I think my teachers are going to really enjoy that. Down below are, again, are just the dates for the Wednesdays, for those 10 Wednesdays, because we will do every Wednesday, but we will join the district with the principal in the district, the director of PDs on those Wednesdays, so we listed them for the teachers. And other than that, page five is more boilerplate. Nothing on that has been changed. On page six, and I apologize, you don't have page numbers, I realize that tonight. The only extra thing that Paul Revere does is we put 30 hours in additional. Those are the before-school and the after-school hour that each teacher gives of themselves to create an enrichment club, so that's why that bullet is there for the 30 hours. And then, the next bullet is, we give additional time for our parent-teacher conferences over and above what the district gives. So, those are the only two things on there that makes Paul Revere unique. And the last two pages are all boilerplate from the last two years. Anybody have any questions?
Any members? Mrs. Rizzo.
Hi, Ms. Kelly. Just out of curiosity, who is on your governing board that's done all this wonderful work?
Ralph is, we have five parents that are elected by the parents. We have three community members and five teachers elected by the teachers. This year, we have two teachers going off, and the board will stay the same. They rotate every two years. Dr. Dakin is one of our board members this year, just came on board, which we're thrilled with. We have Joan Conley, former superintendent, and we have Sylvia Chang from Revere Kids. Those are our three community members, so we believe our community members are really strong this year, and we have a full board. This is the first year we really have had a full board. Thank you.
Any other members? Dr. Kelly?
So, I mean, I just want to congratulate again. I think the work that the Paul Revere School does is amazing. It's great to see a group of teachers who can live outside the box and think of different innovative ways to work with students and rearrange time to give the students more time in the school day without changing the amount of time that each of the teachers is actually working contractually. And it's just great to see a team where there are parents, community members, and teachers sitting together at a table, making decisions about how to operate a school, because when you get right down to it, they're the people who are most invested in what's going on in that school. So, kudos to everybody, and all of our thanks to everybody on the governing board and all of the teachers at the Paul Revere School who work so hard for those kids.
Do we need a motion?
Roll call.
Do we need a motion?
Do I hear a motion on the floor? Ms. Gravellisi?
I make a motion to accept the Paul Revere election-to-work agreement. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferretti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Snella.
Yes.
Ms. Thye.
Yes.
Mayor Origo.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They have to sign tomorrow.
Okay, so the next thing on the superintendent's report is I wanted to share with the committee and with the folks at home that the Revere Public Schools has signed on as a partner in a consortium called the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment. So, it's fitting that we fall on this topic right after we hear from the Innovation School. But this is a partnership between eight different districts across the state, Revere, Ladlow, Lowell, Attleboro, Winchester, Somerville, Framingham, and Boston Public Schools partnering with the Center for Collaborative Education to develop an alternative method for assessing student achievement. And what we hope to do, we've engaged in this three-year-long project, the teachers' union is engaged with us, Eric Fearing, who is the president of the Revere Teachers Association, is actually one of the co-chairs of the group, together with the superintendent from Framingham. And what we seek to do is actually develop a two-tiered system that will give us an alternative to assessing student achievement other than standardized testing. So, it's very cutting-edge, it's very avant-garde, I think, and as we like to be, it leaves Revere on the precipice of innovation across the state. So, in addition to these eight districts that are primary partners, there are another 30 school districts who have already signed on to pilot some of the programs that we develop. So, what we seek to do is develop a performance assessment program where students demonstrate their knowledge and understanding through performance assessment instead of taking these static standardized tests that really, the way we talk about it in the consortium is, the standardized tests are assessments of learning when we want to do assessments for learning, where the actual act of taking the assessment helps a student develop their own knowledge and understanding and prepares them better, not only for college and career, but also for life in general. So, these performance assessments that we envision would give the kids, just by the act of going through them, the knowledge that they need to be successful in college. It's very similar to what our high school students are doing now with their capstone projects and their portfolios, which the senior class has been presenting over the last week. Very exciting work, but the idea is that we would extend that across the K through 12 spectrum, and, you know, students would have age-appropriate performances that would enable them to demonstrate for not just their teachers, but also for their parents in the community, what they know and are able to do, and how they're prepared for the next grade level. At the same time, we want to look at more comprehensive systems of determining school success. So, rather than just look at, oh, school district, Revere Public Schools, here are your MCAS results, and therefore, you're a level, in our case, two, district, which is really great, but for other districts, they might be labeled to level three or level four, which isn't really giving information about how hard the teachers are working or how much, how many gain, how much gain the student has made over the course of a year or what the relationships and the culture of that school district are really like. So, that's kind of the second body of work that this consortium is going to work on, and Somerville, which is one of our partners, has actually taken a lead. They've been doing some work over the last couple of years, and we're going to borrow information from them in order to inform our own work. And the idea is that the district, instead of being rated simply on standardized test results, will also be rated on the culture that they provide for their students and the climate for teaching and the environment of the school district and how the students and the parents interpret the climate of the school to be. How engaged do they feel by the school? So, we think that it's really going to be some cutting-edge work. We're excited to be in the forefront of that work, as we always are, and hope that it's going to move the district to the next level of achievement. Our goal for the team would be that three years from now, when we're done creating the performance assessments and piloting the work, that we'll be able to present evidence to the state that our new assessment system gives the same information about student achievement as a standardized test, but does it in a much richer format that actually helps the student.
Great job, Dr. Kelly.
Good job.
Next item. And there's no cost to the taxpayer, correct?
That is correct. The entire project for three years is grant-funded. So, the next thing I wanted to talk about is another new program that we're going to be bringing to the city, and this one is targeted at helping parents and students- be bringing to the city, and, um, this one is targeted at helping parents and students save for college. And it's a partnership with the, with a group called Inversent. We're gonna be rolling it out, um, either in late fall or early winter of next year. We still have some work to do, um, building our resources. Um, but this is a program that gives matching funds to parents as they or their students, they can certainly have their students, um, put money away, um, as they save for college beginning in eighth or ninth grade, uh, this program can match up to fifteen hundred dollars. Um, and it's, you know, it's not a huge amount of money, but if, if the family is able to put away fifteen hundred dollars and they get the matching fifteen hundred dollars, that's three thousand dollars, which is probably enough for books, at least for a couple of years. And in addition, you know, in order to access the mass, matching funds, parents are required to attend some informational sessions where they learn how to apply for financial aid, how to apply for scholarships, how to gain access to college application information, how to help their students write their essays for college acceptance. It's really a great program, and again, um, this is a program that doesn't cost the district anything. Uh, the partnership matching funds hopefully will come from community partnerships that the Inversent Group will help us form with local businesses. Um, and the accounts will be managed. We've already, uh, talked to George Enzoni in the mayor's office about establishing a, uh, funding account where the funds will be stored. And so, parents should stay tuned. We'll be inviting them in the fall for informational sessions and to get that going, and, you know, we're gonna extend that invitation to parents of students that are currently in high school and middle school, uh, to get them started. And hopefully, we'll be able to scale that down over the next couple of years, all the way down to kindergarten, and get kids really thinking about colleges early as kindergarten.
Any members? Mr. McGuire?
So, you're, you're willing it out to tenth graders, like juniors next year?
We, we're actually hoping to engage freshman parents. Anybody will be invited, but, um, uh, our hope is to gain, gain some folks who can save over a couple of years and really benefit from the program. There are deference, different seminars every year, but I wouldn't say that juniors will be excluded. As we develop the program, I'll have more information on that.
Just, just to help on the fast forward and the information?
Yeah, right.
Would be of world of knowledge to parents, because it's a-
Absolutely. And, you know, we already, um, do have informational nights, and even on these nights, all parents will be invited, not just parents who are participants in the program.
So, I, I have a question. So, could parents, because some parents have already been saving in the, that Massachusetts account that you have? So, could they simply, as part of this account, put in fifteen hundred dollars and then have it automatically matched?
Sure, I don't see why not.
That's, well, that's a great deal.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Good, Johnny.
It's a, it's, it's not fifteen hundred per year, it's fifteen hundred total. Yep. All right. The last piece of the superintendent report is our student report, and so I turn the mic to Gianni Hill, who's gonna fill us on, in on all the great happenings from the student perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. I would like to start off by saying that this past Friday, we had, uh, two organizations, Young Voices and the Providence Student Union, visit the high school to learn more about student-centered learning, um, and advisories. So, students were divided up, and they got to follow about five different students from the high school. They got to tour the advisories, hear more about how the circle discussions happen on Wednesdays, um, learn about how student-centered learning is, uh, how it works in the classroom. And then, after that, we met back in the Learning Commons for an open circle discussion where random students that were sitting in, uh, the Learning Commons for the period were invited to join in and kinda, um, share some of the strengths and obstacles, um, that came with transitioning to student-centered learning. So, that was a great experience to kinda showcase the school and all the work that we've been doing. Uh, this past Wednesday, the community service team met, uh, to redefine community service, to create a, uh, centralized location where any high school student could go to learn about community service, what it is, what it entails, opportunities for it, because, uh, it was brought to our attention at the school improvement team meeting last month that students were struggling to meet that graduation requirement, because they felt like there wasn't enough structure in terms of having a place to go to figure out community service. So, to solve that, we are working on a website. We have a team working on it with administrators, teachers, a couple of students, so, that's been a great opportunity as well. Any students are welcome to join in, where this'll be an ongoing thing probably into next year. And then, our hope is that the students sitting in the, at the, interning at the Genius Bar in the Learning Commons next year will be able to keep the website updated for the student body, um, with opportunities that may be long-term or short-term, like it might just be like a walk, for example, or something like volunteering at, uh, the lighthouse for a couple of months, something like that. And lastly, this past Thursday, the school redesigned an innovation team, approved the Student Senate Constitution for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. It's been a, a year of work, a lot of work, um, and the Student Senate Constitution also entails an appeals process, which will ensure sustainability and, uh, promote like empowerment for the students, because that appeals, that appeals process includes, like, for example, if a, um, administrator were to deny an initiative that the students came up with, we could go to central office or the school committee and, and have them make the final decision on it, just to ensure that. We might not have amazing administrators in ten years, you know, that are, that open-minded to some of our new initiatives. Yeah, so, it's just to kinda ensure that no matter who's in our, like, who's in that position, that the students will always, um, be empowered to come up with new initiatives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gianni. Great work. Any, uh, committee members have any questions? Uh, Ms. Ty?
Well, I'd just like to point out that I had given Johnny a constitution from the nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four school year, which was written by the newspaper kids. Uh, I was the advisor to the newspaper, and they were radicals. Johnny's not a radical, he's just a little different, but that was a different time. And, and, uh, and I was so happy to see them, to watch them do that kind of work. And, uh, at that time, there was some resistance from the administration. This time, there was full support from the administration at every level. Uh, and, um, I think, I think Johnny himself deserves so much support for doing that, uh, so much credit for doing it, and, um, I'm very proud of him and what he has done. I'm sure we all are. He's a great school committee representative, certainly, we share that opinion. But, it's, it's wonderful that he engaged so many different parts of the community, of the high school community, um, students and adults in coming up with this document. And, um, I'm just really happy that what goes around comes around sometimes, all for the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of bills for Hill School as recommended by the Building Committee Subcommittee. Mr. McGuire?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Encumberance DRA PSS number twenty, the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars, so moved.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
A complete cleaning company, amount of one thousand, five hundred dollars, classroom floor cleaning, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
Uh, these are consultant invoices. Hill International, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, invoice number fifty for March sixteen services, so moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
McPhail Associates, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents, invoice number eighty-one, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
So moved.
McPhail Associates, in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents, invoice zero-zero for June services, so moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
McPhail Associates, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents, invoice forty-four July services, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
McPhail Associates, amount of six thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, invoice number forty-five, Alpha Labs testing, July fifteenth, so moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
Technology invoices, uh, Valley Communications, five thousand, eighty dollars and eleven cents, invoice twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Subcommittee Reports. Mr. McGuire?
Um, approval of the memorandum, M-O-A, for part-time cafeteria employees.
Uh, Ms. Ty?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the memorandum of agreement for the part-time cafeteria employees.
Second.
Second.
The, uh, the M-O-A consists of, uh, the same raise that everyone else's got for three years, two, two, and two, and there were some language changes to make some of the temporary leaves of absence consistent with those listed in other, uh, AFSMI contracts. And, uh, it's a, it's a very, it's a somewhat brief and very good, um, document for both sides. Congratulations to Dr. Kelly for another successful one, and now we're all set until two thousand and eighteen.
You think?
Hallelujah.
Any other members? Uh, roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the Garfield Roof, uh, support for funding. Mr. McGuire?
Yes, this is, uh, just some housekeeping and a motion, like, to propose a roll call vote in support of the city council's allocation of funds for the Garfield School Roof Project, so moved.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is policy amendments. Mrs. Rizzo?
Thank you. Um, policy Subcommittee met May ninth. Um, we discussed the amendments of J-L-C-D, administering medicines to students, which is the same policy, but we just added knock-in to it. Also, E-B-C, emergency plans. The only change to that was to comply with the statutory change. J-J-F, student activity accounts, um, an additional page was added, um, regarding graduating class funds. And I-H-A-M-B, teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco was, um, it's to be filed on the DUCY website. So, we are asking for the following policies to be amended, and asking for a motion, please.
I make a motion to accept the following policies amended. Thank you.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi? Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzo?
Okay. Also, on May ninth, the policy Subcommittee met, um, and these are to be adopted, I-J-N-D-C, internet publication. Um, basically, it's just to add a piece, hmm, oh, it's for the supervision and approval of webpages. Also, G-B-E-C, drug-free workplace policy. It's just, um, basically safe and secure environment, of course, we want that. Um, and E-C-A-F, security cameras in school, and basically, other than the locks on the doors and stuff, it still adds an extra, um, environment of safe and secure atmosphere. So, with that, I make a motion to accept the following policies for adoption.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the School Department Communications. Um, Mr. McGuire?
None.
None. New business? Late communications? None. Motion? Uh, Ms. Ty?
Even though we have spoken at these meetings many times about our opposition to lifting the cap to, cap on charter schools, we have been requested by the Save Our Public Schools Committee, which is a consortium, um, you know, teacher unions, um, uh, administrators unions, uh, PTAs, any number of people from all aspects of the state, uh, all working together, um, so that we can try to, uh, block that initiative to raise the cap on charter schools. We have talked about them over and over again, about, um, how they will hurt Revere, how much money we actually lose right now from Revere to charter schools. It's, uh, almost two million dollars, and it's certainly two million dollars that we could use, uh, besides the fact that we have really good public schools and really great schools. And the answer to making public schools better is not to take money away from us, but to, to feed money so that we can feed our kids these knowledge. So, I move that we, um, that we also pass the resolutions against lifting the cap on the Commonwealth Charter Schools as presented to each of us individually by the coalition Save Our Public Schools Mass dot com. Is there a second?
Motion to accept?
Second.
A second? Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Origo?
Yes.
Public comments? Three minutes.
Thank you for your patience, Ralph.
Name and address to the record?
Ralph DeGio, forty-nine Washington Street, Revere. Um, basically, I just have a quick question, um, comment, and I don't mean to open any can of worms or anything. It's just, just a question on Subcommittee meetings and hearings and so forth, and, uh, just basically, do the school committee, um, rules of order state anything that they And just basically, do the school committee rules of order state anything that they can't take place in the school committee room so that it can be aired live along with all the regular school committee meetings that we have? So this way, I believe it would coincide with the open meeting laws. And not that it may or may not already coincide with the open meeting laws that are out there, but I know some people don't know what's going on and what can be seen. This way, everybody can see it, and that there is something they can fall back on and take a look at it during the meetings. And I just also hope that it, I think it would help that there's full transparency so everybody knows what's going on so that nobody can say, well, this was going on, that wasn't going on. So everybody can see what's going on. Just a poof of thought.
It's certainly something to take under advisement. I know that we are complying with the open meeting law by the posting and by the meetings being open. I think we can have a discussion as a body about having them televised. I don't know how many people need to see my ugly mug on TV, but... Mr. Ferenti.
Yeah, but sometimes, Ralph, we can't get the school committee room, so we have to have it where we can get it. Because sometimes the room is booked, and sometimes we'll do a meeting, maybe like a two-week notice, and then we'll go to the secretary and see if we can get through them. They'll say, no, you have to have it here. It's not that, you know, we're not doing anything, it's just that we have to take whatever room we can get at.
Ms. Ty.
Ralph, I chair the Personnel Subcommittee, and for that, most of it involves contract negotiations. Most of it includes things that maybe that we would not feel comfortable in the law and basic fairness.
That's basically they will fall under executive session.
That'd be an executive session.
That's executive session.
Yeah. And it's, I can't think of a time when it wasn't that. You know, because otherwise, you know, it's there. And when we do the budget next week, there'll be a summary of what changes we have made, for example, in personnel and in other areas as well, so that you'll understand, you know, not only what the final figure is, but how we got to that final figure. But it's a good suggestion.